We're waiting for just a moment, for a little additional information from upstairs, so we should be starting in just a couple of minutes or so. Apologize for the delay. All right, let's go ahead and proceed. Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll.
Mr. Lane? Mr. Lane, thank you. Mr. McCord?
Here.
Mr. Myers?
Here.
Dr. Stevens? Mr. Stennett? Mr. Beard?
Present.
Mr. Blevins?
Here.
Mr. Blues?
Here.
Ms. Crosby?
Here.
Mr. DeCamp?
Here.
Mr. Ellinger?
Here.
Ms. Gordon?
Here.
Mr. Gray?
Here.
Ms. Henson?
Here.
And Ms. Shames?
Here.
Thank you.
I think everyone is present in County IV, so we have a quorum. It's my pleasure to call to the podium Pastor Beau Simmons from the New Mercy Community Church. Pastor Simmons? Well, we will let Mr. Green pinch hit here, as he has done so ably in the past. This is Artie Green, the Council Liaison.
Always willing to stand in. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to send the business of the people, this community. We pray for this community and all those contained within. We pray that you would strengthen us so that we would do the business with good hearts and clean minds, strengthen us where we weaken, build us up where we're torn down, and help us to focus on the things that are good for the community and all those in it. In the name of Christ Jesus, we thank you and pray. Amen.
Our baseball coaches can tell us, it's always nice to have a good pinch hitter on the bench, and Artie, we appreciate your help. We have minutes from some prior meetings, two on February 19th, one on February 21st, March 6th, March 20th, and April 8th. Motion to approve would be in order?
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Crosby and a second by Councilmember Gordon to approve those minutes. Any discussion? Those in favor, then please say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Councilmember Crosby, I'll turn the podium over to you. Oh, does it keep switching on automatically?
It's supposed to.
It did.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. It is quite an honor for me to stand before you tonight and make a very special presentation. Tonight, we have with us a very special team, as you can see before you. We have the Southwest Lexington Pony Baseball Eight-Year-Old All-Stars, who just won the Pinto Division World Series, held from July 17th through the 20th in Murfreesboro and West Frankfort, Illinois. The tournament consisted of a pool play followed by a single-elimination championship bracket. Southwest Lexington won its pool with a 3-0 record to qualify for the single-elimination bracket. In the finals, the Lexington team defeated the Murfreesboro All-Stars 11 to 1. The World Series victory was a first for the Southwest Lexington Pony League, so congratulations, boys. Over break, the mayor and I had the opportunity to present these boys with their trophies, and it was quite an honor for, I know, both of us to be there. And the mayor gave them a special speech, and he reminded them, and I think right now with the Olympics going on, it's very appropriate. We're seeing all these world records being broken, and he told them that many athletes aspire to be world champions, and these young boys are world champions. So what an accomplishment, and we are so honored to have you here with us tonight. And we were also able to see a special video that kind of summed up their season, and we thought, that night, the mayor and I thought it would be really nice to be able to share that with all of you all here. So if I could ask you to please play the video?
I've paid my dues, time after time. I've done my sentence, but committed no crime. And bad mistakes, I've made a few. I've had my shadow man kick in my face, but I've come through. We are the champions, my friends. And we'll keep on fighting till the end. We are the champions. We are the champions. No time for losers, 'cause we are the champions of the world. I used to rule the world. Seas would rise when I gave the word. Now in the morning I sleep alone. Sweep the streets I used to own. I used to roll the dice. Feel the fear in my enemy's eyes. Listen as the crowd would sing. Now the old king is dead, long live the king. One minute I held the key. Next the walls were closed on me, and I discovered that my castle stand upon pillars of sand, pillars of sand. I hear Jerusalem bells are ringing. Roman cavalry choirs are singing. Be my mirror, my sword, shield. My missionaries in a foreign field. For some reason I can't explain. Once you go, there was never, ever an honest word. That was when I ruled the world.
At this time, I'd like to go ahead and ask the mayor and also Councilmember Blevins to go ahead and come to the front. Many of these boys are from all over the city, but they're especially near and dear to Councilmember Blevins' heart because Cardinal Run is in his district, and he knows many of these families very well. So we want to make sure that he was a part of this celebration. And, parents, we also want to recognize you because these boys don't have this opportunity without your dedication. And playing All-Stars, we know, is not an easy thing. You have to travel quite a bit, so thank you. And at this time, none of this is possible without the special dedication of your coaching staff. So I'd like to invite Head Coach Joe Sotell to come to the mic and introduce the players and the coaches. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I'd just like to say that it really is a pleasure and an honor to be here, and especially to give these kids a chance to get the recognition that they deserve. They really are a talented and gifted group of players, and I think just their presence brightens up the whole room, so we really appreciate this opportunity. At this time, I'd like to call up, we have a couple of coaches missing, but we do have a few here. James Wright. Brian Bacchus. And absent tonight, Kirk Probst, who was also the president of Southwest Pony Lexington this past year, and Myron Pedroci. And now, the real pleasure is to call the kid, the players, up to the front. We'll start right here with Wade Drake. Hunter Wright. Jose Gonzalez. Cameron Probst. Cole Hackney. Timmy Lancaster. Eric Sotell. Jordan Vice Price. Jeremy Bacchus. Tyler Gergalis. Alan Showalter. And there are two players who are absent, Juan Coronado and Austin Pedroci. I'd like to recognize them as well.
We would be glad to have you stay as long as you wish. If you need to go now, I certainly understand. Thanks so much. Brings us down to the ordinances entitled to first reading. Madam Clerk?
Ordinance Number 1, an ordinance changes the zone from a mixed-use 2 neighborhood corridor in M U 2 Zone to a downtown frame business B 2 A Zone for 1.028 net, 1.66 gross acres of property. For property located at 502 through 526 South Broadway, 320 Pine Street, and 319 Cedar Street, subject to certain use restrictions imposed as conditions of granting the zone change, C M W Incorporated. Number 2, an ordinance changes the zone from a professional office P 1 Zone to a highway service business B 3 Zone for 0.48 net, 0.59 gross acre of property located at 1264 East New Circle Road, a portion of, subject to certain use restrictions imposed as conditions of granting the zone change, D J Acquisition LLC. Number 3, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a grant from the Kentucky Justice and Public Safety Cabinet, which grant funds are in the amount of $35,000. Commonwealth of Kentucky funds from the Law Enforcement Service Fee Program are for support of the cost of police overtime hours for traffic, alcohol, patrol, the acceptance of which does not obligate the Urban County Government for the expenditure of funds. Appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 33 and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number 4, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a grant from the Kentucky Justice and Public Safety Cabinet, which grant funds are in the amount of $2,154,562. Commonwealth of Kentucky funds are for police training incentive funds, the acceptance of which does not obligate the Urban County Government for the expenditure of funds. Appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 35 and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number 5, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a grant from the Commission on Fire Protection for Snail Standards and Education, which grant funds are in the amount of $2,037,506. Commonwealth of Kentucky funds are for training incentive funds for firefighters, the acceptance of which does not obligate the Urban County Government for the expenditure of funds. Appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 36 and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number 6, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a grant from the Kentucky Justice and Public Safety Cabinet, which grant funds are in the amount of $65,000 federal funds for the operation of the Drug Task Force in the Division of Police, the acceptance of which does not obligate the Urban County Government for the expenditure of funds. Appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 38 and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number 7, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a grant from the Kentucky Justice and Public Safety Cabinet, which grant funds are in the amount of $50,000 federal funds for the continuation of the Street Sales Drug Enforcement Project, the acceptance of which obligates the Urban County Government for the expenditure of $16,667 as a local match. Appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 39 and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number 8, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a supplemental agreement Number 1 with the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, Department of Highways, for acceptance of additional federal funds for design of bike lanes on Rose Street in the amount of $10,000 and appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 34. Number 9, an ordinance amending Section 21-52 of the Code of Ordinances abolishing one position of administrative specialist grade 110 N and creating one position of licensed inspector grade 110 N in the Division of Revenue. Number 10, an ordinance, excuse me, amending Section 21-52 of the Code of Ordinances abolishing one position of traffic signal technician master grade 114 N, abolishing one position of traffic signal technician grade 108 N, and creating two positions of traffic signal technician senior grade 112 N in the Division of Traffic Engineering. Number 11, an ordinance amending Section 21-52 of the Code of Ordinances abolishing one position of staff assistant grade 107 N in the Division of Government Communications, creating one position of staff assistant grade 107 N in the Division of Parks and Recreation, and abolishing one position of safety specialist grade 115 E in the Division of Risk Management. Amending Section 22-52 of the Code of Ordinances abolishing two positions of telecommunicator part-time grade 111 N in the Division of Enhanced 911, and creating two positions of telecommunicator part-time grade 111 in the Division of Emergency Management 911. Transferring the incumbents, amending Section 8 of Ordinance Number 183-2008 to correct the division line number, amending Section 10 of Ordinance Number 183-2008 to correct the authorized strength for the position of staff assistant senior grade 108 N, and amending Section 12 of Ordinance Number 183-2008. Transferring incumbents for certain positions for the Division of Parks and Recreation to the Division of Fleet Facilities and Fleet Management, retroactive to July 8, 2008, and appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 37. Number 12, an ordinance amending Section 3 of Ordinance Number 180-2008, correcting the subsection line number relating to the Park Patrol Officer Part-Time, and amending Section 9 of Ordinance Number 180-2008 to include a 2 and 3 tenths percent pay increase for employees holding the position of Staff to Counsel 2, retroactive to June 23, 2008. And Number 13, an ordinance amending certain of the budget so the Lexington Department of Urban County Government to reflect current requirements for municipal expenditures and appropriating and reappropriating funds Schedule Number 32.
Thank you. That concludes the reading of the ordinances entitled to first reading. Are there any motions? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, if you'll proceed to the resolutions entitled to first reading.
Resolution Number 1, a resolution accepting the bid of Scotty Basler establishing price contract for the Haley Pike Landfield Tobacco Barn Lease for the Department of Environmental Quality. Number 2, a resolution accepting the bids of Nugent Sand Company and Moore's Trucking establishing price contracts for sand for golf courses for the Division of Parks and Recreation. Number 3, a resolution accepting the bids of Supreme Medical, Brogan's Healthcare Supply Incorporated, Triannum Health Services Incorporated, and Henry Schein Matrix Medical establishing price contracts for emergency medical supplies for the Division of Fire and Emergency Services. Number 4, a resolution accepting the bids of Central Equipment Company Ingram Truck and Tractor, Xenia Power Equipment, and Prices Tractor Sales Incorporated establishing price contracts for tractor and mower parts for the Division of Facilities and Fleet Management. Number 5, a resolution accepting the bids of Vulcan Materials Company and Lexington Quarry Company establishing price contracts for rock for the Division of Streets, Roads, and Forestry. Number 6, a resolution accepting the bids of Oar Safety Corporation and Bluegrass Uniforms establishing price contracts for breathing apparatus products for the Division of Fire and Emergency Services. Number 7, a resolution accepting the bids of Traffic Parts Incorporated, Pathmasters Incorporated, Baldwin and Sowers Incorporated, and Traffic Control Products Incorporated establishing price contracts for traffic signal and control equipment for the Division of Traffic Engineering. Number 8, a resolution accepting the bid of Kentucky Freightliner Trucks Incorporated establishing a price contract for a hook, lift, loader truck for the Division of Facilities and Fleet Management. Number 9, a resolution accepting the bid of Brogan's Healthcare Supply Incorporated establishing a price contract for alternate care equipment for the Division of Emergency Management 911. Number 10, a resolution accepting the bid of Intelligent Products Company in the amount of $127,310 for variable frequency drives for the Division of Water Quality. Number 11, a resolution accepting the bid of Southern Rebinding Incorporated establishing a price contract for record-keeping supplies for the Fayette County Clerk's Office. Number 12, a resolution accepting the bid of Scotty
hourly in the Division of Streets Roads and Forestry effective August eighteen, two thousand eight. Thad Scott Engineering Technician Grade one-eleven N sixteen point one-oh-eight hourly in the Division of Water Quality effective August eighteen, two thousand eight. Ratifying the permanent civil service appointments of James Ray Engineering Technician Principal Grade one-fifteen E in the Division of Engineering effective July seven, two thousand eight. Nelson Wright Equipment Operator Senior Grade one-oh-nine N in the Division of Streets Roads and Forestry effective July seven, two thousand eight. David Bilter Park Designer Grade one-fifteen E in the Division of Parks and Recreation effective June thirtieth, two thousand eight. Alan Wells Treatment Plan Operator Grade one-thirteen N in the Division of Water Quality effective July twenty-one, two thousand eight. Charles Begley Solids Processing Supervisor Grade one-fifteen E in the Division of Water Quality effective August fourth, two thousand eight. Harrison Burris, Thomas Hager, Avery Johnson, Terry Shelton, Darrell Stevens Equipment Operator Senior Grade one-oh-nine N in the Division of Waste Management effective July seven, two thousand eight. Philip Lykins Clerical Assistant Grade one-oh-four N in the Department of General Services effective July seven, two thousand eight. Leopold Bond Skilled Trades Worker Grade one-eleven N in the Division of Community Corrections effective June tenth, two thousand eight. Approving the probationary sworn appointments of Joseph Eckhart Police Sergeant Grade three-fifteen N twenty-six point three-eight-eight hourly in the Division of Police effective August eighteen, two thousand eight. Wallace Hayes Police Lieutenant Grade three-seventeen E two thousand seven fifty-two forty-six biweekly in the Division of Police effective August eighteen, two thousand eight. Sean Ray Police Sergeant Grade three-fifteen N twenty-six point three-eight-eight hourly in the Division of Police effective August eighteen, two thousand eight. Todd Samuelson Fire Captain Grade three-sixteen N twenty-one point four-nine-seven hourly in the Division of Fire and Emergency Management, excuse me, Fire and Emergency Services effective July seven, two thousand eight. Philip McLean Fire Lieutenant Grade three-fifteen N sixteen point two-six-one hourly in the Division of Fire and Emergency Services effective July seven, two thousand eight. Ratifying the permanent sworn appointments of Melissa Sadlachek Police Lieutenant Grade three-seventeen E in the Division of Police effective May eleventh, two thousand eight. Daniel Bellitt, Kristen Shilton, Marcus Wayne Scott Fire Major Grade three-eighteen E in the Division of Fire and Emergency Services effective July seven, two thousand eight. Ryan Strange, Lauren Alley, Sherri Anne Chui Fire Captain Grade three-sixteen N in the Division of Fire and Emergency Services effective July seven, two thousand eight. Harrison Burris, Thomas Hager, Avery Johnson, Terry Shelton, Darrell Stevens Equipment Operator Senior Grade one-oh-nine N in the Division of Waste Management effective July seven, two thousand eight. Philip Lykins Clerical Assistant Grade one-oh-four N in the Department of General Services effective July seven, two thousand eight. Leopold Bond Skilled Trades Worker Grade one-eleven N in the Division of Community Corrections effective June tenth, two thousand eight. Approving the probationary sworn appointments of Joseph Eckhart Police Sergeant Grade three-fifteen N twenty-six point three-eight-eight hourly in the Division of Police effective August eighteen, two thousand eight. Wallace Hayes Police Lieutenant Grade three-seventeen E two thousand seven fifty-two forty-six biweekly in the Division of Police effective August eighteen, two thousand eight. Sean Ray Police Sergeant Grade three-fifteen N twenty-six point three-eight-eight hourly in the Division of Police effective August eighteen, two thousand eight. Todd Samuelson Fire Captain Grade three-sixteen N twenty-one point four-nine-seven hourly in the Division of Fire and Emergency Management, excuse me, Fire and Emergency Services effective July seven, two thousand eight. Philip McLean Fire Lieutenant Grade three-fifteen N sixteen point two-six-one hourly in the Division of Fire and Emergency Services effective July seven, two thousand eight. Ratifying the permanent sworn appointments of Melissa Sadlachek Police Lieutenant Grade three-seventeen E in the Division of Police effective May eleventh, two thousand eight. Daniel Bellitt, Kristen Shilton, Marcus Wayne Scott Fire Major Grade three-eighteen E in the Division of Fire and Emergency Services effective July seven, two thousand eight. Brian Strange, Lauren Alley, Sherri Anne Chui Fire Captain Grade three-sixteen N in the Division of Fire and Emergency Services effective July seven, two thousand eight. Robert King, Kerry Bowling, Brian Cavill Fire Lieutenant Grade three-fifteen N in the Division of Fire and Emergency Services effective July seven, two thousand eight. Ratifying the permanent correct, ratifying the permanent community corrections appointments of Franklin Anthony Timothy Bowman, Dustin Hall, Matthew Lemmons, Nathaniel Sutton, Shannon Aubrey, Christopher Connolly, Lavoy Jones, Beau Riddo, Sandra Woods, Community Corrections Officer Grade one-ten N in the Division of Community Corrections effective July six, two thousand eight. Amy Calcavici-Houstone Community Corrections Officer Grade one-ten N in the Division of Community Corrections effective July six, two thousand eight. Connie Arthur, Edward Callahan, Douglas Van Winkle, Community Corrections Officer Grade one-ten N in the Division of Community Corrections effective April thirtieth, two thousand eight. Approving the unclassified civil service appointment of Connie Godfrey Social Worker Senior Grade one-thirteen E one thousand eight fifty-nine thirty-six biweekly in the Division of Adult Services effective August eighteen, two thousand eight. Susan Bush Program Manager Senior Grade one-twenty E three thousand seventy-six ninety-three biweekly in the Department of Environmental Quality effective August fourth, two thousand eight. Vivian Lacy Client Assessment Counselor Grade one-twelve E one thousand six eighteen forty biweekly in the Division of Adult Services effective August eighteen, two thousand eight. Marie Simpson Clinical Services Manager Grade one-seventeen E two thousand three oh-seven sixty-eight biweekly in the Division of Family Services effective August fourth, two thousand eight. Number fourteen, a resolution making a declaration of official intent with respect to reimbursement from subsequent borrowings of temporary advances made for capital expenditures for numerous government projects including but not limited to climate control facility for voting machines for Fayette County Clerk's Office, renovating remodeling and repairing various government facilities, sidewalk replacement repair and resurfacing, resurfacing and renovating of various government-owned parking lots and tennis courts, purchase installation and maintenance of traffic signal equipment for the Division of Traffic Engineering, the McConnell Springs improvement for the Division of Water Quality, acquisition and installation of fiber optic cable, acquisition and installation of a variety of technology equipment including software, computers, network upgrades and components, printers, platters and servers, HVAC maintenance for various government facilities, construction maintenance and equipment installation at various government park properties, funding for purchase of development rights program, construction of various shared use trails, purchasing of paving equipment for the Division of Streets Roads and Forestry, funding of for various projects, vehicles and equipment in the Division of Fire and Emergency Services, purchase of government-wide security systems and equipment and telephone system, government-wide fleet replacement as all as described in the attached exhibit in an approximate aggregate amount of sixteen million one hundred and six thousand nine hundred and ten dollars. Number fifteen, a resolution of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government authorizing and directing the Lexington Center Corporation to borrow for and on behalf of the Urban County Government in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed twenty million five hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for the purpose of refunding at a savings of two, at a savings the two thousand one A bonds, authorizing the execution and delivery on behalf of the Urban County Government of a supplemental lease of the project being financed between the corporation as lessor and the Urban County Government as lesssee to serve as security and a source of payment for the financing and taking other related action. Number sixteen, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute three claims payments agreements with Humana Insurance Company for employee health insurance plans Platinum PPO, Gold PPO and Silver HDHP for the period of January one, two thousand eight through December thirty-one, two thousand eight. Number seventeen, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute master consulting services agreement with CPS for police sergeant and lieutenant promotional testing at a cost not to exceed fifty-three thousand dollars. Number eighteen, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an engineering services agreement with Strand Associates Incorporated for development of the Salt Barn site at a cost not to exceed one hundred and forty-three thousand five hundred dollars. Number nineteen, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an engineering services agreement with Hall Harmon Engineers Incorporated for design services for Rose Street widening project bike lanes at a cost not to exceed twenty thousand dollars. Number twenty, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a professional service agreement with Hensley Elam and Associates relating to, related to hosting and management of software and data storage for the backup server for the Lexington Fayette Regional Emergency Operations Center at a cost not to exceed eight thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Number twenty-one, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a service agreement with Dormant Security and Group Incorporated for maintenance of security locks, locking devices and electronic systems at the detention center at a cost not to exceed forty-five thousand dollars. Number twenty-two, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute three mutual aid agreements with EKU Police Department, Fayette County School, Public Schools, Division of Law Enforcement and the Madison County Sheriff for mutual aid at no cost to the Urban County Government. Number twenty-three, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an accreditation agreement with the Council on Accreditation for reaccreditation of the Department of Social Services at a cost not to exceed sixteen thousand sixty-one dollars plus the cost of peer review site visits. Twenty-four, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with the Cincinnati, New Orleans and Texas Pacific Railway Company for installation of a sanitary sewer force main at a cost not to exceed twenty-six thousand dollars. Twenty-five, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute agreement with Smithtown Neighborhood Association Incorporated five hundred dollars for the office of the Urban County Council at a cost not to exceed the sum stated. Twenty-six, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a lease agreement with Pilgrim Baptist Church for lease of parking spaces at a cost not to exceed one thousand dollars with future yearly payments subject to sufficient funds being appropriated by the Urban County Council. Twenty-seven, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a lease agreement and related documents with Icon Office Solutions Incorporated, a state-approved vendor, for a shared and network can, copy your Canon IRC five-one-eight-five-one for the Urban County Council Office for a term of forty-eight months, subject to sufficient funds being appropriated in subsequent fiscal years at a cost not to exceed five hundred and seven dollars per month. Twenty-eight, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute six amendments to agreements with the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet for extension of the West Hickman Trail Loudoun Avenue South Limestone Multi-Modal Traffic Study and Three Traffic Signal Upgrades Traffic Control Projects through June thirtieth, two thousand nine at no cost to the Urban County Government. Twenty-nine, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an amendment to agreement with AIDS Volunteers Incorporated for extension of the agreement for the Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS Project through December thirty-first, two thousand eight. Number thirty, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute amendments to two agreements with the Kentucky Department of Military Affairs, Division of Emergency Management for extension of the agreements for the chemical stockpile emergency preparedness program for FY two thousand seven and FY two thousand eight through June thirtieth, two thousand ten. Number thirty-one, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute five memorandums of understanding with five local law enforcement agencies for homeland security funds for mobile data, computers and other equipment at no cost to the Urban County Government. Number thirty-two, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms and Explosives for use of new ATF software at no cost to the Urban County Government. Thirty-three, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute five memorandums of understanding with five local law enforcement agencies for homeland security funds for mobile data, computers and other equipment at no cost to the Urban County Government. Number thirty-two, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms and Explosives for use of new ATF software at no cost to the Urban County Government. Thirty-three, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute change order number one to the contract with McElwain and Associates for the Shilato Trail, increasing the contract price by the sum of nine thousand thirty-one dollars from thirty-eight thousand thirty dollars to forty-seven thousand sixty-one dollars. Thirty-four, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute change order number one to the contract with McElwain and Associates for the Shilato Lafayette Trail, increasing the contract price by the sum of four thousand nine hundred and seventy-four dollars from nineteen thousand two hundred and seventy dollars to twenty-four thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars. Number thirty-five, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a statement of compliance with the Commonwealth of Kentucky Transportation Cabinet for bridging, bridge posting requirements. Number thirty-six, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a notice to be recorded in Fayette County Clerk's Office related to the office of the Old Frank, to the closing of the Old Frankfurt Pike landfill stating that the property at sixteen thirty-one Old Frankfurt Pike has been utilized as a landfill and may not be disturbed without the permission of the Kentucky Division of Waste Management. Number thirty-seven, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to approve Collins and Company Incorporated, the third-party claims administrator for Kentucky League of Cities, to provide workers' compensation claim services for the Urban County Government for FY two thousand nine at an annual cost of one hundred and thirty-nine thousand two hundred dollars. Number thirty-eight, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a donation from the Crittersitters of Lexington Incorporated, Bluegrass Barkery, What's the Scoop LLC and Dogtown LLC of six bullet-resistant dog vests for the use at the Division of Police at no cost to the Urban County Government. Thirty-nine, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a donation from the Financial Institution Security Officers Association of Central Kentucky of computer investigative items for use at the Division of Police at no cost to the Urban County Government. And number forty, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a partial release of easement, releasing a portion of a landscape, drainage and utility easement at thirty-one seventy-five Beaumont Center Circle formerly part of three-one-six-one Beaumont Center Circle at no cost to the Urban County Government.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That concludes the reading of the resolutions entitled to second reading. Are there motions? Councilmember Lane.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to request a second read on number thirty-seven by suspending the rules. And the reason for this is evidently we have a, an issue on timely payment.
All right. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to suspend the rules and give second reading to number fifteen so that the, the money savings can be realized on these bonds.
Any others? Councilmember Blevins.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to request suspension of the rules on number forty. The property owner in this situation is being held up and doing their project by our release of the leans, or the release of the easement, excuse me, and they would like for us to proceed.
Thank you. We'll take that as a motion by Councilmember Lane and a second by Councilmember Gordon to amend, to suspend the rules, to give second readings to items fifteen, thirty-seven and forty. Any others?
Aye.
Councilmember James.
Number twenty-five, please. Thank you.
Any others? Seeing none, those in favor of suspending the rules to give second reading to items fifteen, twenty-five, thirty-seven and forty, please let it be known by saying aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries. Madam Clerk.
Resolution number fifteen for second reading. Resolution of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government authorizing and directing the Lexington Center Corporation to borrow for and on behalf of the Urban County Government in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed twenty million five hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for the purpose of refunding at a savings the two thousand one A bonds, authorizing the execution and delivery on behalf of the Urban County Government of a supplemental lease of the project being financed between the corporation as lessor and the Urban County Government as lesssee to serve as security and a source of payment for the financing and taking other, and taking other related action. Number twenty-five, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute agreement with Smith, Smithtown Neighborhood Association Incorporated five hundred dollars for the office of the Urban County Council at a cost not to exceed the sum stated. Number thirty-seven, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to approve Collins and Company Incorporated, the third-party claims administrator for Kentucky League of Cities, to provide workers' compensation claims services for the Urban County Government for FY two thousand nine at an annual cost not, at an annual cost of one hundred and thirty-nine thousand two hundred dollars. And number forty, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a partial lease of easement, releasing a portion of landscape, drainage and utility easement at three-one-seven-five Beaumont Center Circle formerly part of three-one-six-one Beaumont Center Circle at no cost to the Urban County Government.
Thank you very much. Motion to approve those items would be in order. Have a motion by Councilmember Stenett and a second by Councilmember McCord to approve those resolutions receiving second reading. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. Those in favor, please indicate by voting aye electronically. Those opposed, vote nay electronically. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Lane.
Yes.
Mr. McCord.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Dr. Stevens.
Aye.
Mr. Stenett.
Aye.
Mr. Beard.
Aye.
Mr. Blevins.
Aye.
Mr. Blues.
Yes.
Ms. Crosby.
Yes.
Ms. Durdecamp.
Yes.
Mr. Ellinger.
Yes.
Ms. Gordon.
Aye.
Mr. Gray.
Yes.
Ms. Henson.
Yes.
And Ms. James.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Those resolutions are approved. This time, we're ready for consideration of the items listed in the mayor's report. I am advised that we have one individual who wishes to speak prior to.
Mayor, could I make a comment?
Pardon me?
Can I make a comment on this?
You certainly may, Councilmember.
Communication for Mayor. I was inquiring today, I was asking the twelfth floor why, a reason that somebody wasn't reappointed to the Board of Architectural Review, and I was told that the reason it wasn't is because that particular individual had served two terms. And according to the resolution that was passed in nineteen ninety, I think commonly known as the Fernida Resolution, which was passed by the council, that anybody serving two consecutive full terms on any boards or commissions of the Urban County Government would then have to have a lapse of at least one year before being reappointed. And I noticed that on the communications from the mayor, there are six reappointments noted on here, and I just want to be sure that if we're following this rule for the Board of Architectural Review, that we're following for all the boards and commissions. If, if we don't know, then I would like to table number three, six, eight, eleven and twelve until our next council meeting, so we can be, check that. until our next council meeting, till we can be- check that.
Well, let me respond. I know James Fraser's not in violation of that rule because the Parking Authority's only recently been formed and-
All right, then I'll eliminate twelve. I just want to be sure that, you know, we're following- if we're going to follow it for one, we need to follow it for all.
We should.
I have made a motion that we-
I wish I had known a little earlier today so I could have an answer for you offhand. I can't tell you about these particular individuals, but we certainly can, and I'm not aware of there being any pressing issue with regard to quorum for any of these folks, so we can run it through next week.
Well, I would just- beside number twelve, and you're right, because it wouldn't be on the Parking Authority, but the rest of the reappointments, if we could just table them to next week till we find out for sure that this is- they've only served two terms.
All right.
Okay, second.
Motion is to, I guess, approve the communications from the mayor except items three, six, eight, and eleven. Is that right?
Three, six, eight, and eleven. And actually, the first, they're- they're two on three. I don't mean the appointment of the first one, I just meant the reappointment, the second part of number three.
All right. Any discussion? Councilmember Stevens.
Relationship to item six, which is the appointment of Dr. Kanga, he is serving his first term now.
Thank you. I thought he- you know, he was appointed to fill an unexpired term, and as I recall, and you are correct, because he's- he's only served like six months or something like that.
Yeah, he's just been there a short time.
I would be glad to eliminate number six of those also.
Mayor.
Without objection.
On the second part of number three.
Yes.
The first one listed there.
Yes.
This is- would just be her second term.
I appreciate the help, because I don't recall the particulars about these, but thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember James.
Mayor, that would be the case with the second one on number three as well.
All right.
Dave Barberi over here.
There you go.
Mr. Tackett is also serving his first term, so he- there's not an issue with him on it.
I'd be glad to eliminate number three, then, Mayor.
All right.
So then we're down to eight and eleven.
Okay. Be glad to check on those. All right. Motion is to approve the communications from the mayor other than items eight and eleven.
Right.
Okay. Now, Ms. Lawless, I think you wanted to speak. I don't know if that addressed the issue you were- all right. If there's no objection, Ms. Lawless indicated she wished to speak on- on one or more of the communications from the mayor.
I wanted to speak on number five, the appointments to the Board of Architectural Review. I'm not speaking against these people that are recommended for appointment, but that leaves the BOAR without a certified architect, and that's a really critical part of what the BOAR does, that people that are trying to do the right thing, trying to upgrade their property or fix it, they go to the BOAR when the staff can approve it, so it means there are special circumstances that need to be solved. So by Clyde Carpenter rolling off in this- these new appointments, that leaves the BOAR without a single certified architect, and that's a real problem for people like myself, who's been before the BOAR, looking for solutions and being advised on how to solve the problems when you're upgrading your property. So I would- I'm not speaking against these, but I hope that can be resolved before the BOAR meets again.
I am fairly confident we don't have any other applicants for the Board of Architectural Review at present, so if you or anybody else, for that matter, has a certified architect you wish to recommend, I'd be glad to entertain that. As I said, we don't have any applicants. I don't recall there being any architects among what-
Well, I know it's often a thankless, hard job to be on the BOAR, and so-
Both.
But it really is critical in meeting the regs that- about the makeup of the BOAR. I think it's a really critical piece for-
Okay.
So I hope somebody knows somebody.
Councilmember DeCamp.
Yes, I checked with your office today, Mayor, and there has been an architect's name forwarded-
Good.
-to your office and-
Just recently?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, it's been there. But anyway, I think that- I had a long talk with Shay, and she said she'd get back to me tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you.
Also.
Is there a requirement in the bylaws to have somebody on there?
It requires two people with preservation, architecture, design, history, and related field, which I wish I'd got- I wish I'd gotten my degree in-
So are we staying within that on the bylaws then by doing this or not?
Yes.
We still would be?
As far as I know, Derek Wingfield would be the only person that would meet that
Counsel, did- was there someone over here? All right. Anything further? Yes. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Mayor. Do you know offhand, or maybe Mr. Green knows, is there another opening coming?
There are two coming.
There are two coming. Within what amount of time? This year?
Yes, there are two open right now.
Well, I know that, but we've got-
There are two others open also.
Okay, so there are two additional ones.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anything further? Those in favor of the motion to approve the communications from the mayor other than items eight and eleven, please let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. There are several communications for information purposes only, and I'll leave those for your perusal. We do have one matter we need to attend to based upon our meeting this afternoon, and that is a follow-up to our discussion this afternoon of our capital improvements program and our level of bonded indebtedness. There was a sense that, based upon what we learned today, that a follow-up meeting in the very near future would be appropriate, so I wanted to just try to get a show of hands tonight as to whether or not it might be feasible to meet next Thursday, as we did this Thursday, and I think we meet on the 21st next, do we not?
Yes.
And I was wondering if it might be feasible for us to meet that afternoon prior to the council meeting, beginning at approximately four o'clock. Four o'clock? Yes. How many would not be available next Thursday at four o'clock? Just one. We missed you today, I'm sorry about that.
I was at the eye doctor's, so thank you, sir.
With fourteen others, is that okay?
That's good, that's fine, absolutely.
Let's plan on having a special meeting then, Thursday at four o'clock, and we'll let you know about the location soon as we work out those details. Councilmember Myers.
Thank you, Mayor. Could we also, in that meeting, address the second spreadsheet that we spoke of with the facilities?
Yes, although I would tell you that I don't think a couple hours will permit us to do justice to the second part. We can kind of get that conversation started, certainly.
Okay.
But in order to resolve it, we'll need a fair amount of time.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure, so if it's advertised, we get that in there so that we're not breaking-
Yeah, Mayor, I think you-
There are about 500 pieces of real estate that are involved in a lot of different tenants.
Mayor, I think you described that as a special meeting. Would you mean a workshop? Because I think they're over here wondering if we're doing a special meeting.
Whatever we did today, I don't know what the status of it was.
Yeah, a workshop.
So you're not talking about a council meeting, you're just talking about a workshop-type meeting.
That'll be fine.
Whatever that happened this afternoon.
Is that what we- do we have a works?
I'm not familiar with what happened this afternoon, but I can make sure I relay it to the council office.
Then we'll do a workshop. All right. Anything further on that front? Last thing, I know we talked about this just a little bit on Tuesday afternoon, and I'm very grateful for the standing ovation that the council gave Commissioner Don Kelly, but tonight is his last council meeting. He was here just a moment ago, and I just- I want to say again how deeply appreciative I am of the work that he has done on our behalf, and tomorrow's his final day here. But I think his accomplishments will be long remembered and in abstentia. I just wanted to say to Don, thanks very much for- for his help. That's the last item I have. We have a building inspection report for the second quarter that you can look at. Are there any announcements from the council? All right. Seeing none, we can move ahead. I have three individuals who have signed up to speak this evening. I'll just take them in order. The first is Mr. McCarthy. If you'd step to the podium, you'll have three minutes.
Your Honor and members of the council, for the record, my name is Bernard McCarthy. My address is 515 Harry Street. I wish to point out that if you guys do this tax increment financing thing, instead of the stuff that the paper reports that you propose to spend the money on, I would prefer that you put the tax increment funding into such things as widening that block of Upper Street from Main to Vine. Since it's being emptied of buildings anyhow, at least temporarily, this would be the ideal time to grab a 16-foot-wide strip of land and add another traffic lane plus a bike lane. And I would like to see you put some money into extending Fifth Street from its present end point on through to Newtown Pike. And I realize it might take a little gerrymandering to get a three-square-mile TIF district to stretch that far, but I'm pretty sure it can be done.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Our next speaker is Patrick Moore, and I understand that Jennifer Ellis has signed up this evening, Ms. Ellis. If you- and you wish to defer your time to Mr. Moore, so, Mr. Moore, you'll have six
Hello, my name is Eric Patrick Moore. I live 4165 Hartwood Road out in Tamark, and my friend Jennifer Ellis came with me tonight so I can have three extra minutes. She is actually the wife of my friend Judd Ellis, who is the grandson of Doc Ellis, who was at OBGYN at Central Baptist back in the day, and the great-grandson of Ellis Drugs, which used to be back on the corner a long time ago. So thank you, Jennifer, for coming out and giving me extra time. I want to, again, talk about Lexington's economic development. Actually, I prefer the term transformation. So in my work, what I do, organizational architecture, behavioral economics, I've written a book on this, and I've written some articles on business Lexington, but I just wanted to give you guys my visual presentation of what behavioral economics is beyond the traditional economic models that we've operated on in the past, perhaps to, hopefully, to transform and vibrantly grow Lexington's economy, which is because 83% of our LFUC budget comes from the payroll tax, and the vibrant economy seems to be fundamental to me. So I just want to briefly explain to you guys what science is now saying about economics to kind of give us a feel for where we want to go in the future. So hopefully I do this thing right. Am I doing this right? Okay, I'll start with Alan Greenspan's quote, which I read in the paper about a year ago. He said, "I've been dealing with big mathematical models, and you know, if I could figure out ways to determine whether people are more fearful or euphoric, and figure out which way these two things are working, I could forecast the economy better than any way that I know." What he's talking about is this- the feeling, the emotion, the emotional impact of humanity on financial bottom lines. Go on to my next one. So with that being said, I want to- I'm sorry, the colors are kind of dark on this computer. Those three circles in that model talk about behavioral economics, the integration of economics with the physical sciences and the human science of psychology. So I want to kind of break it down. I still have- do I have one minute left?
You've got four minutes.
Okay, okay, great. It's like, wow, that's quick. Okay. So first, as I was an engineer from Purdue and then from Toyota, my background's in physics, so I want to try to explain a little bit of quantum physics to you guys just for a second in layman's terms. Beyond the atom, which back when we were in high school, we had, you know, I went to Taste Creek Junior High, so we had those little Styrofoam models of atoms that we made with the protons and neutrons and electrons, kind of cool. But nowadays, physicists have found that beyond those things that we have been accustomed to, there's actually vibrating strings of energy that is at the core of all things, practically invisible, as a matter of fact. So I just want- I gave you little pictures there of the little string, sort of, but if you can imagine, something basically invisible determines the outward manifestation of everything from a physical point of view. Again, vibrating strings of energy is a kind of the word that I want to focus on there. Thank you. Then Albert Einstein, going on with the physics beat, one of my favorite guys in the history of time, said, "Look deep into nature, and you'll understand everything better." And I put the picture of the soil there because I believe that leadership and government is actually a culture, like an environment, for things to grow from. So if you have a really good soil, then you can produce really good harvests. If you have a really bad soil or a really bad environment, bad culture, then it's hard to create a great harvest. Maybe your budget is tight, maybe your economy is slow. Keeping with the physical sciences, I'll talk about the biology of economic growth. Excuse my sort of cartoonish pictures. If we want to go from having maybe a small economy, like one single orange, and we want to transform it into a whole tree, maybe a whole orchard full of abundant oranges, then there's a biological and actually a physical system that has to be employed. There's actually an inside-out, bottom-up system. You notice how a tree grows from the bottom up. Most management systems are- and I would say most governmental systems are very top-down, but nature itself grows from the bottom up. Also, you'll see that the seed inside the orange actually comes from the inside out, which means that our economy is based upon the insides of our people. And tapping into and engaging the hearts and minds of our people, which our city, I believe, has a ton of intellectual capital, my understanding is that we have the 10th-highest percentage of population with college degrees in the country. That's my understanding, if I said that right. So just the- we have the potentials, what I'm saying. We have all this stuff in Lexington, all this great potential, but I don't believe that our soil, that our environment, is conducive to create a great harvest, in my opinion. I think that's why our budgets are tight and our revenues are down, especially because we're so tied to the payroll tax. Now going on to the psychology of economic growth, and I have one minute, I have to go fast. Bottom line, brain research, from my understanding, has found that there are two centers of the brain. You have your rational center of the brain, you have your emotional center. When push comes to shove, brain researchers found, people don't act like robots. When push comes to shove, they act on their emotions. And what I'm saying is, our economy is largely emotionally driven, and when our people are not emotionally engaged by the four people in the room tonight, and people who don't follow government, who don't know who our councilmen are, who don't know anything, when our people are disengaged, their emotions, their economic engine is stagnant, and therefore our economy is stagnant. I'm almost done, I think. Dr. Alice Miller, who is a Swiss psychiatrist and author, she talked about, "The latest scientific findings confirm something that many therapists already know from experience, that rational constructive action," which means building a great entity depends not only on the intactness of our intellectual facilities, but also on the extent to which we have access to our true emotions, our emotional energy, the vibrating energy that we have. And I'm almost done. And, okay, UK sports, if the teams aren't doing great, then the attendance is bad, revenue's are bad at UK, so if our players are flat, if our people are flat, and I believe Lexington is a flat, flat-lined culture, there's very little vibe around Lexington. I think that shows up in our economic bottom line, and that's kind of silly right there, but I just wanted to give you an example. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moore. Does anyone else wish to address the council? Mr. Cobb, if you'll step to the podium, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. First giving honor to God, counsel, the brother whose last days today I won't shine your shoes when you leave. I was listening to what he was saying, and he was saying that some of our economic problems are determined by invisible factors. And that's amazing, because I was thinking the same thing, because I tried to find out what exactly was racism. Was it a color? Was it an entity? Was it a certain person? And all of us have that in us. And all of us have that in us. I tried to put my hand on what it was, and he was touching on some things that made me think a little deeper. I think we can solve our economic problems in Lexington if we do tap into our true emotions like he talked about. For example, we need to be honest with ourselves. If you don't like me, that's cool, but provide me opportunity so I can get away from you. Provide me with opportunity so we can do some things to expand and get our own. But to continue to have the same mindset, to continue to think that Lexington can go on as business as usual, it's not going to stand. When I was little, we had micro-city government, we had manpower, we had Mr. and Ms. Black Lexington, we had East End, we had West End, and we got rid of the director of that, Dr. Ronald Berry. And by what means they did, it didn't really matter, but we got rid of these institutions, and the black leadership from then on has basically disappeared. So we need to find out where the new black leadership is. I'm nobody's enemy in here today, I just want an opportunity to share what God has given me. It's a great joy for living. I seen a story about a professor who was dying named Randy Pouts. He knew he was dying, and it touched my life. I know I'm gonna die. I know I'm not going to be able to continue to come up here and look the devil right in his face, and ain't no retribution, but it don't bother me right now. We got to learn to live united. Is that what United Way said? We got to live united. We got jobs, everything in development going on everywhere, you ain't even thought about to live. We exist. Development going everywhere. If I was a stranger and I came downtown, I wouldn't think that there was no black people in the city. I'm not just putting the onus on no certain race. Black people gotta get theyself together, too. We gonna live so high and so holy, we gonna make all the nations respect us. I'm not mad at you, Mayor. I'm not mad at you, Vice Mayor Gray. I got to live, man, and all I ask you to do is let me shine. It's like a scientist. If you don't let a brain surgeon do what he's supposed to do, we all gonna die. I'm called to spread peace, love, and happiness across the globe, not just in Lexington. I ask you again, pray for Lexington. We all got a job to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Does anyone else wish to address the council? Seeing none, a motion to adjourn is in order. Motion from Councilmember Stennett and a second from Councilmember Myers. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you.